Good evening, welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting for October 10th, 2023. To kick off our festivities tonight, I would like to call on Mia Gurelik and Diane Song to lead us in the pledge, mission, vision, and community pledge.
Good evening, everybody. Please stand.
Face the flag and put your right hand over your heart, and I will now lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
BHUSD mission statement, vision statement, and values. Mission: Educational excellence, vision: Our students will recognize, realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
The Beverly Hills Unified School District Community Pledge is as follows. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you both very much. Before we move on with the approval of the agenda, it's been a really rough week. So unfortunately, we're going to take a couple of moments of silence tonight. The first one for our construction worker and the family of that construction worker from last week's incident. I know Dr. Brighi has more to say on that later, so we will just have our moment of silence up front and recognition and support of that family and what they're going through. Thank you. The second, I was watching the interview with Yakov Argamani, the father whose child, Noah, ironically, was taken, and I thought, what if that were me? My parents ask themselves, what if that were me? What if I were faced with the dire fact that I may never see my child again? So then comes the flood of emotions, the devastating loss, and the absolute empathy for the Argamani family and every other family in Israel in this situation. There are outlets for our support in this predicament. I know this community has flooded to support efforts in Israel. Perhaps the best action for us to take at this point is to feel. If we let ourselves understand the gravity of this situation, which, having been a teacher at the time of 9/11 and 2001, it smacks of that, that level of terrorism and loss. Give ourselves permission to express our feelings. Maybe we can begin to put in perspective how utterly fortunate we are right now, how we need to embrace and support each other, move quicker towards an existence that doesn't hold on to the vitriol and spite we are currently experiencing every day. It is with this that I now ask for a moment of silence as we reflect on what is happening in Israel, continue to stand against the hate and violence that brought us to this moment. Thank you, everyone. As unglorious as it may be to move on with the proceedings, that I must do, especially to get our wonderful students out of here tonight. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Wells. Any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Do I have to call roll call because of Mrs. Marcus?
I think you should.
Is she on?
She's in the house, yes.
Okay.
I see her, she's unmuted.
Mrs. Marcus just took a vote on the agenda, just want to make sure.
Yes, I couldn't hear her.
It's okay, we're going to roll call the other votes tonight, so thank you. Okay, Dr. Brighi, motion carries, thank you. Report of closed session action, sir.
Thank you, President Margo. I have one item to report from closed session this evening. The board has voted five to zero to approve a final settlement agreement for case number 21STCV00694, and that is it.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to our teacher-student spotlight, so.
Great, we're going to turn this over to Ms. Barnison and Ms. Cabellas.
Good evening. We are excited to honor and recognize the following students for receiving national recognition at various levels due to their academic excellence and achievements. On behalf of BHUSD, we would like to celebrate the following students acknowledged in the 2023 College Board National Recognition Program. When you hear your name, please stand up, come on up. Atessa Regalado, Deborah Nazrati—
Good evening, welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting for October 10th, 2023. To kick off our festivities tonight, I would like to call on Mia Gorilic and Diane Song to lead us in the pledge, mission, vision, and community pledge.
Good evening, everybody. Please stand. Face the flag and put your right hand over your heart, and I will now lead you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
BHUSD, mission statement, vision statement, and values. Mission, educational excellence, vision, our students will recognize, realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
The Beverly Hills Unified School District Community Pledge is as follows. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion, do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members, and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you both very much. Before we move on with the approval of the agenda, it's been a really rough week. So unfortunately, we're going to take a couple of moments of silence tonight. The first one for our construction worker and the family of that construction worker from last week's incident. I know Dr. Breggy has more to say on that later, so we will just have our moment of silence up front and recognition and support of that family and what they're going through. Thank you. The second, I was watching the interview with Yakov Argamani, the father who's child Noah ironically was taken, and I thought, what if that were me? My parents ask themselves, what if that were me? What if I were faced with the dire fact that I may never see my child again? So then comes the flood of emotions, the devastating loss, and the absolute empathy for the Argamani family and every other family in Israel in this situation. There are outlets for our support in this predicament. I know this community has flooded to support efforts in Israel. Perhaps the best action for us to take at this point is to feel. If we let ourselves understand the gravity of this situation, which having been a teacher at the time of 9/11 and 2001, it smacks of that, that level of terrorism and loss. Give ourselves permission to express our feelings. Maybe we can begin to put in perspective how utterly fortunate we are right now, how we need to embrace and support each other, move quicker towards an existence that doesn't hold on to the vitriol and spite we are currently experiencing every day. It is with this that I now ask for a moment of silence as we reflect on what is happening in Israel, continue to stand against the hate and violence that brought us to this Thank you, everyone. As unglorious as it may be to move on with the proceedings, that I must do, especially to get our wonderful students out of here tonight. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern and Mrs. Wells. Any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Do I have to call roll call because of Mrs. Marcus?
I think you should.
Is she on?
She's in the house, yes.
Okay.
I see her, she's unmuted.
Mrs. Marcus just took a vote on the agenda, just want to make sure.
Yes, I couldn't hear her.
That's okay, we're going to roll call the other votes tonight, so thank you. Okay, Dr. Breggy, motion carries, thank you. Report of closed session action, sir.
Thank you, President Margo. I have one item to report from closed session this evening. The board has voted five to zero to approve a final settlement agreement for case number 21STCV00694, and that is it.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to our teacher-student spotlight, so.
Great, we're going to turn this over to Ms. Barnison and Ms. Cabellas.
Good evening. We are excited to honor and recognize the following students for receiving national recognition at various levels due to their academic excellence and achievements. On behalf of BHUSD, we would like to celebrate the following students acknowledged in the 2023 College Board National Recognition Program. When you hear your name, please stand up, come on up. Atessa Regalado, Deborah Nazrati, and Tyler Jansen for the National Hispanic Recognition Award, and Kiana Hales for receiving the National African American Recognition Award. These students earn academic honors from the College Board National Recognition Programs. These programs celebrate students' hard work in high school and showcase their strong academic programs. We're thrilled to celebrate our students and recognize them for the great work that you have been doing, and we're proud of your strong academic performance in the classroom and particularly on the College Board assessments like the PSAT, NMSQT, PSAT 10, and AP exams. The following students received National Merit Commended Status through the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Rachel Cohen, Kevin Davidson, Daniel Galt, Mia Gorilic, Na-Yon Kim, Edward Park, Tyler Persons, Brandon Seff, Jacob Schaefer, Odilia Shofat, and Diane Song. These students, you guys, we got to get a line out the door, these students are among 34,000 high scorers on the PSAT and NMSQT and are designated National Commended Students. In recognition of your outstanding ability and potential for academic success in college, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation honors you guys, these students, with letters of commendation certificates. Some candidates will be eligible for special scholarships offered by scholarship corporate sponsors through the National Merit Program. And lastly, we are excited to announce this year's National Merit semifinalist, standing student, Lucas Eskolden Lee. Lucas is among less than 1% of the nation's high school graduating seniors who qualify as a semifinalist. Semifinalists receive standing based on the 2022 PSAT-NMSQT. Only semifinalists will have an opportunity to advance in the competition for merit scholarship awards. Lucas is competing in the National Scholarship Competition for finalist standing in spring of 2024. So on behalf of Beverly Hills High School, I want to congratulate all of our students standing here tonight and your recognition for being nationally recognized through the College Board and National Merit Scholarship Programs. And lastly, this is very fitting because tomorrow, our district is providing the PSAT exam for our students, and that NMSQT exam is how, a portion of how all of you guys were recognized, so thank you very much.
So I'm sure my colleagues have a quick comment, and then Ms. Starkins has given you the stay there.
Yes. She'll tell us.
And I love that we're running out of wall.
I know.
It's a great thing, may we, that's a blessing in some cultures, may you always run out of wall. Mrs. Marcus, any comments?
No, I want to congratulate all of them and wish them well for their last year, I assume they're in their last year, and wherever they go, I am thrilled that they will be able to take this honor with them as they apply for college. And again, congratulations on these awards.
Mrs. Wells, I'm sorry, Ms. Lifson.
Yeah, so congratulations to all of you, of course, this is a great accomplishment, and I'm just so proud that I have peers of my own who are here tonight for a very, much more important and impressive reason than I am, so yeah, congrats.
I'd like to congratulate you all, it's such a joy to see you here today, especially after the weekend that we've had, it just gives me so much hope, and I'm really proud of you, you should be proud of yourselves, and not just for how well that you've performed on an exam, but also for your leadership and the role that you've played during your time here at Beverly Hills Unified School District, we're really grateful for you.
Congratulations, thank you for joining us. I really admire you all for giving it your best, and I thank you, everything we're doing up here and out there is for you all, so thank you for taking advantage of it, and I really would love a picture with all of you, if you don't mind, please, thank you.
So I want to commend you for not just your academic talent and your intellectual gifts, but the fact that you've persisted through what a lot of people say, oh, that's not fun, I don't want to take a test, but the fact that you have made us proud and that you have persisted through and the results show from you, and we want to thank you.
I've said my wall thing. I would only say, Sophia, if we take a picture with them, just take your little tag off and just kind of blend in.
There you go.
Now the moment we've all been waiting for, Ms. Starkins, what are our marching orders?
We're making two and three rows, so, and then the tall, tall back. You got it, the tall in the back, you got it.
Kick it back.
Yeah, listen, I was there in all of high school, guys, that was me in high school.
Yeah.
All the way to the front.
There we go.
Okay, you can go scoot yourself, scoot over there, scoot in.
Good.
Can you peek through too, don't block your, you can't see the camera, they can't see you.
So I go block everyone.
Okay, all right, here, let's have your, everyone's going to be in it, y'all coming in. We're all, yes, come on in.
Yeah.
Got you, got you, got you.
Don't move.
It's going to be blocked. This isn't working at all.
Who are we looking at?
Whatever.
Who should we look at right now?
She's moving.
Are we taking pictures right now?
I know.
Go sit down.
Everybody step forward a little bit, please, please, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit, okay.
I'm totally blocking.
Give more steps.
Ready, and one, two, three, and same foot, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Congratulations!
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
this is a great time, so our viewers at home don't have to look at the masses marching.
Yay! Hi, welcome back to Now Noah Knows, Part Two of Jennifer Hegley. There was so much information while shooting Part One, I decided to break it into two episodes.
The next type of coding that we were talking about is iterative, right? Repetitive code. So if you look at your short program that you wrote, where do you see repetition?
Move.
How many times did you move?
Three times each.
Twice, and you did that twice, right?
Yes.
Yes, so you moved three times twice. So there exists in basically every programming language, a loop, it's called a loop, typically a for loop. For i in range, how many times you want to repeat in parentheses, three, put a colon, Python looks at this colon and says, okay, whatever lines exist below this that are indented, whatever's indented, I'm going to repeat that this many times. So if you just want to put move parentheses once, you have to just type the move command once, but it will repeat itself three times. You could copy, you could drag across these two lines, copy, and then go highlight your other three move commands and just paste it instead of, or in place of those. So let's run it and see if he does the exact same thing he did before. So what is, what do you want him, what do you want Carol to do in order to turn right? You're going to write what's called a function to make it turn right. So these are like predefined functions, I'm going to teach you how to write your own function.
Oh.
And the purpose of our own function is to make him turn right instead of only turning left. If I want to write a function, I have to start with DEF, which means define. I want to define, and I think it makes sense, you might want, you can call it anything you want to technically, but let's just call it turn right, because that's what underscore right is kind of like the standard of how these other ones are named, so let's make a similar one, but we're going to call it turn right. Notice the parentheses and colon at the end is going to say, anything that exists indented underneath this colon line is going to be part of this function.
Could I do for i in range and then only right turn left once?
Yes, wonderful, do it, do it. So the last thing that we should, that I'd like to talk about is selection, right? Like the computer can make a decision for you. These are like a question, these are a yes or no, these have a yes or no answer, right? Like if, so we can say if front is clear.
And front means in front of the dog.
In front of the dog of the direction he's going.
Currently facing.
Yes, yes, but the way that we can use these is within what's called an if statement. An if statement is another like block of code or another command of code that allows you to decide that you want to do these commands or these commands depending on one of these conditions. If this is true, do this, otherwise, do these blocks or these lines of code. Now I see he's got walls in the way. Yeah, let's write some code, let's make him do something when he hits a wall.
We're going to get Carol the dog to go get the rabbit for lunch.
He's going to be just stuck doing, oh, running out of time, yeah.
But if that were the case, then it would be an endless loop.
Sure, yeah, if that, if he ended up in the pattern, then he just gets stuck.
Because in that corner, it's the only one where Carol is surrounded by three walls.
Exactly, very good.
Jennifer, thank you so very much, this is fantastic, I'm going to go now program something to do something to make my life easier.
There you go.
And now, Noah knows.
Okay, moving on, we're going to call on the BHEF, Tina Wiener and Jill Eggerman, who have a presentation.
Your screen sharing? Am I screen sharing? Sorry, I'm trying to screen share. There we go.
You did.
Look at that! This is all, all the backup people, just in case. There you go.
Okay, so, good evening, hi, everyone. I am so excited to present this following item, it is my absolute favorite thing that BHEF does, and I think that it sort of, it really just exemplifies what BHEF can do and does do for this district, and this is to bring incredible new ideas and innovation to this district. And so we have, we have our grant recipients, and we're so proud of them.
So we are going to start out with Annette Goldstein, it's going to be representative Horace Mann team.
First of all, thank you so much for the good stuff. So in UTK, we learn through play, and it's purposeful play, so in order to do that, you need a lot of stuff. And some of the things that the grant is giving us is dress-up items so that kids can take on roles, which helps reduce anxiety when dealing with things in real life. For example, I know it wasn't fun taking my kid to the doctor for their flu shot every year, there was a lot of, you know, anxiety about that, so we have dress-up so they can act that out with their friends, talk about how they might be feeling. When children talk to each other and dramatically play this, it's much, it just goes more smoothly than when a parent does it. It's really interesting to listen to what they do and say, we have a chef outfit, so they have menus that they read and they take orders, we have veterinary clinics so that they can talk about maybe if their dog is sick, how they go to the doctor, so it's really fun for them to learn through this way, and it helps them with expressive language, it helps them reduce anxiety, it helps them in turn-taking, understanding others' perspectives. We also were able to, with this grant, get dolls that have special needs, so we have dolls that have wheelchairs, walkers, leg braces, which helps kids to engage with these dolls, and then when they see people in society, they realize they're just like us, they just have different needs, and it feels, everybody feels more comfortable having that in, basically in their everyday life. We also were able to get multicultural dolls, so we can also experience how people may look different, but we're all the same. Can I go to the next one here? See, there's some, these are some of the dress-up outfits that they got us, so we can experience different cultures. The kids will have an opportunity to wear the different outfits, we also have community workers, so they can talk about different things that may be going on in the community, feel more comfortable when they come across these people. We do a lot of tying in with books, so when you're reading a book and you are basically reenacting the book, having costumes makes it more fun, and it really helps them understand plot and character and setting and all those things we teach reading a book when they actually do it, it's just more fun and it sticks with them, and like I say, UTK is play, but it's purposeful play. There's a reason for everything we do, and thank you so much, we can't thank you enough. Oh, yes, oh, so this is, no, this is it, this is what I was telling you about, these are the dolls that have, that come with all of the different things that the children can use to help them navigate the world and feel more comfortable in it, and also just to express themselves and develop vocabulary around these things. So thank you so much, we're always looking for stuff, and I really appreciate that you got it for us.
Yay! And just to fill in a little bit, part of the purpose of these grants is so that these teachers can pilot these programs and then see how they work during this school year with their kids, and hopefully it's something then that can expand to all of the TK, or to both of the schools for the TK5 programs, and the same with our next presenter, it just, we're trying, they are the ones that are piloting all this amazing stuff, and hopefully it works, so we're excited. All right, Mr. Tinter.
Thank you, Tina, and thank you, Jill, and thanks to all the BHEF Board and all the members there. Thank you, Dr. Breggy and Board, for letting me speak here tonight on behalf of this grant. Really grateful for the entire district, you know, we, just the support in the classroom and to get the chance and opportunity to try out something new. So I remember last year, oh, thanks, I think it was maybe last fall, Dr. Breggy, that you introduced at the opening day the new mission and vision, maybe it was a year, year and a half, two years ago, but when you said educational excellence, that stuck with me, and, you know, I kind of thought about it throughout the year, and I thought, you know, in my, in the back of my head, there was that little voice that said, am I, have I ever tried to be excellent in the classroom? And I always thought, you know, I don't know if I have, I've been, I've been pretty good, I think I've been all right, but to try to have an excellent, to try to be excellent, and I thought that there was something about that, that mission that really spoke to me. And last year too, there were, I looked out at my students, and I thought, you know, I've been teaching the same sixth grade curriculum for about eight or nine years, and something is different this year. What I had been doing just wasn't working the same way. So I started to play around with some ideas, and out of, out of that brainstorm- And out of, out of that brainstorming and, and time of self-reflection, came up with this idea for Bulldog Heroes. And that is essentially to gamify my room. I have gamified, I have tried things in the past where I did an escape room or maybe a scavenger hunt. But this is really a thematic year where we are, 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 have taken the, the classroom and made that the board game, made that the, the board. So here's how we've started the year. I've got four houses in my, in my room and they align with our four, four core values of making connections, showing integrity, building resilience, and valuing learning. And each house is associated with one of the mythological characters you see up there. Hermes for making connections because he's the messenger god and Artemis for integrity. Hercules for resilience, Athena for learning. Because one of our novels in sixth grade is Percy Jackson and that seems to be the last few years that the novel that students really resonate with. And in that novel, they have godly houses. And so that's where this idea came from. And each student creates, has created a shield, a shield of honor. And on there, they have a nickname, their particular house and something that represents them. And on that shield of honor, they're going, they're starting to earn stickers throughout the year to represent academic growth, not necessarily achievement or meeting the standards. But anytime they grow in a particular standard, they get a sticker on their shield, much like Ohio State football puts stickers on their helmets when someone gets a certain number of tackles. Then they also get to collect these character cards here, which you see on, on the screen. Here's what they might look like in the students' hands, these little collector cards that I utilized some of the artificial intelligence technology to, to create. So these characters in here are all from our literary sources throughout the year. So here's Janice Avery, one of our, one of the characters from our current novel, Bridge to Terabithia. And there's a little lesson there. So when a student demonstrates integrity, they might get a card here to collect along with their four core ticket. So really this, this game is incorporating character building, academic achievement, academic growth rather, and teamwork. And the final piece, the teamwork piece is their houses, right? They all have their houses and every two weeks, we've done so far, every two weeks, we've had a quest on Mondays. And, and that's how this game is taking place in the classroom. I haven't changed anything as far as our curriculum. We teach the same novels and the same essays and the same, same grammar and language. But this is just a different way to deliver that instruction every two weeks. So we utilize this game to, to either review or preview things in the classroom. And I have taken on the role of Harold, the Harold, a Greek messenger over, from over 2,000 years ago, who on the first day of, of class was set to retire. Except something happened and now he's been forced to teach these kids to become heroes throughout the year. And so the kids get to see Harold dress up in different ways every two weeks and deliver this game. And that might be the form of an escape room or scavenger hunt trivia, but the kids are really into it. You can see a few of the, the groups up there. They designed house uniforms. They made sweatshirts and t-shirts. And they're really getting into the competition. And I am starting to feel a little bad because on days when it's just me, they say, where, where's Harold? We don't, this guy is kind of boring. So they, they have really taken to the game. And I'm so thankful for this grant because the little shoestring budget I had this summer, which is called my discretionary income, got us a little bit started. But now with this grant, we're really going to be able to, to take this to the next level and really hopefully provide the students with memorable year. And I'm reminded of Mr. Margot's speech at the beginning of this year about those memorable experiences of project-based learning. And I really hope that these kids, you know, have a similar experience and have memories that will last them and also a chance to, to learn the standards of sixth grade. So thank you very much and thank you again, BHEF.
So our next grant winner is, couldn't be here tonight. It's Jessica J. from the, the high school library. And her amazing idea was to create a high school appropriate makerspace in the library. So it's amazing, fun, cool, creative activities that, you know, maybe not readers could be engaged in the library. And so it is, a lot of our families are very familiar with the makerspace from TK through V and, and a little bit through the STEM offerings at the middle school. But really this is kind of a, a fun extra and, you know, a way to engage the kids on their off time.
Okay, and so Kate Greenleaf also couldn't be here today. So she's from Hawthorne. And she, her program is called We Are Social Detectives. And so what I want to do is just read what she had prepared. She said, this is the name of the social skills program she's using with students in kindergarten through third grade this year. As a resource, oh, as a resource teacher, in addition to teaching reading, writing and math, I also teach strategies and help my students with their social emotional learning. Social skills are essential life skills. Building these skills can lead to a better social interactions. Students improve their ability to listen in a group, work with partners, and simply share space with others. I help my students figure out how to think in social situations. They are taught to observe and think about their own and others' thoughts and feelings. They also learn the connection between thoughts, feelings and behaviors. They learn about making a smart guess or figuring out the hidden rules and what's expected or unexpected behavior. They learn about thinking with your eyes, that people's eyes are sources of information. By following someone's eyes, kids can get clues about that, what that person is thinking or might do next. We Are Social Detectives helps students figure out how to better think in social situations, which positively impacts their relationship and success in school. And so she's also hoping that, that next year, this is something that can go on to fourth and fifth grade. Okay. And what, I've got one more, sorry, almost. Okay, and so, yeah, we were very fortunate this year. We had $16,000 that we put aside. And we, by stretching ourselves just a little bit, we were able to fulfill all of these grants that these teachers had applied for. So we feel pretty happy at BHEF that we could do it. So this last one is, is Kevin Repick and Ms. Stam. I'm not going to go there trying to, I, I had someone even phonetically give it to me and I'm like, I'm just not going to go there. So Ms. Stam, this is introducing Struggly for mathematics instruction. And so, so this one is a, basically a supplement to, to the current math curriculum, but it takes a preventative approach, laying the foundation for solid math understanding through engaging activities and similar to Mr. Tinters' program through gamification. So this one is all about connections, a little bit of brain gym, developing a deep understanding of number sense. And it's teaching students to struggle and enjoy it as struggling is good for brain growth. And so very excited about this program and having them implemented this year in their classroom. So I, I just, yay to all these teachers. I did want to say thank you to all these staff members for putting together such thoughtful applications. They spent a lot of time really thinking about what they need and what they could do in the classrooms. I want to thank Dustin and our board members for serving as a committee reviewing applications. And Dustin really led us through what we should be looking for in these applications. And we're really looking forward to revisiting all these projects at the end of the year and seeing what they look like in practice. So, thank you.
Mrs. Marcus, any comments on this presentation?
Okay, good, good evening. I would like to thank the BHEF for piloting this wonderful program for the last couple of years. And I want to congratulate everybody that applied and for receiving the grant. I'm extremely impressed with the creative programs that you've made. They are unbelievable. And the students are going to be the winners when they participate in these. It took a lot of thinking on the people's, the teachers' part and they are to be really congratulated. And I, I heard something that I thought was particularly, and I thought about it, and that is being able to make sure that maybe this can be expanded within your grade with your other teachers or with other grade levels where they can be modified to be appropriate for that grade level. Some of these show great potential. And I hope that they realize that that's so. I would also like to mention about the engagement activity, the engagement of these activities and how students will look forward to going to that class. And that's one thing you always want to have, is have them say, you have, you have this to class today and we're doing this. And they get very excited and that's very important. So I just wanted to, and I look forward next year, at the end of the year, that you will come back and show us what the kids have been doing. And I want to thank you again, it's wonderful.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Ms. Lifson?
Thank you again to the BHEF for, is this, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry, to the BHEF for this program idea. This is such an amazing opportunity, I think, for our teachers to show what they've been working on and explore in the classroom, like the different ideas they have. And I'm really excited to see how this pilot program develops.
I agree with everything that's been said. And I'm, thank you to BHEF. And you're right, this is just such a wonderful program to be able to provide. And especially thank you to all of our teachers for making the effort and really being creative and wanting to really be excellent in your classrooms. It's really wonderful and thank you so much.
I was a little surprised by how enthusiastic BHEF's presentation was. You guys were really excited and I wasn't, I wasn't certain why. And after hearing the teachers present, now I know exactly what that smile was for. And I, I thank BHEF for your hard work, your fundraising and seeing this through. And to the staff, I wish I was a TKer or a sixth grader again. I really do. And I would love to be in your class or to have students in your class. I will say, having three kids in the district, I hear about a lot of the daily, you know, in the backseat or when I'm picking kids up and so on. And this is the stuff that I do hear about. It has an impact. It makes its way home when you've got, you know, four or five kids in the car with you. So thank you for your enthusiasm. It's really contagious. Thank you.
I really enjoy when I see areas where I, I've donated to, I've donated to BHEF and I know many people have. But it's, it's really nice to see some of the actual fruits of, of the efforts of BHEF. And I, I really have enjoyed seeing the actual projects come to fruition. And I know from someone who's worked for many years in schools, the key to staying and wanting to stay as an educator or someone who works with children is to have innovation, new ideas, new resources. And often, but not always, but often funds can really help go a long way, whether it's to, you know, try something new, pilot something, redecorate your classroom, have a new system for your kids. And those children are really lucky and I'm glad I got to see firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm going to put on my telethon hat here for a second and say, what you saw tonight, imagine if every teacher had access to those grant funds. It is very important to support our foundation. This is proof. Plus, it's now six o'clock and all we've talked about tonight is education. And I'm so happy. I might cry. Mr. Tinter, thank you. When you give speeches, you never really know if things really hit home. And since I know you weren't, like, had no reason to compliment me because you already got the grant. I'm not even on the grant committee. So I took it as a genuine compliment. So thank you very much for that. It makes me feel good. And I think it really shows the importance of our foundation in relationship to education on a daily, real-life basis in our district. It's not something that's just ethereal and it's not stuff. It's real education happening in real time. So thank you all for that. You are dismissed. No. Okay, Ms. Kraushauer, any public comment? Okay, a little bit shocked, but I welcome that. Okay, moving on, thank you all. To the consent calendar, any items to pull?
I'd like to pull I.
I, okay. Wonderful. Okay, I'm going to make a motion then to approve the consent calendar minus item 10I.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No pun intended. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item I. Somebody would like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for approval of professional services agreement with Alham Samadi.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Thank you, Mrs. Wells, for making the motion. Any comments or questions?
I'll say something. It's wonderful when we have people who are parents in our district who, who come forward with an interest to help and to serve. And they're willing to get into the so-called trenches to help because they are, are passionate about a particular problem. And I think in this case, I, I feel that Ms. Samadi will be of super help. And I'm, I'm very grateful to her commitment and happy to support this appointment. Thank you.
And I was just going to ask if Dr. Bregge could just speak about the position and how it came about just so that the public knows why we have it on the agenda and what this is about.
Certainly. So this position is a new position. It's funded by a grant that we have. We've been talking a lot about student behavior, accountability, providing resources, mental health, opportunities, experiences, small group, large group for students. And I think as a district, we've done a really good job of that. We began working with several parents about nine months ago. And Ms. Samadi was one of those parents that began to work with Ms. Decatrelle at the high school and also Laura Collins-Williams. And we started to look at some of the issues that we were having. We were trying to look at what type of support does our students need and where. We started to look at the professional contracts that we have. Thank you to the board for your additional support for our MFTs that we've been able to provide at our schools. We found during this work that there were two different areas that, that there was a real need. One of them was to ensure that that MFT practitioner time at the high school was equitable to the times at our other schools. It was not, so that need is there. So we needed to have that licensed person there, not a full-time position. But we also realized through our work, through a lot of the work with PTA and our school administration, is that, that parent liaison piece, that, that person that is able to do a little bit more kind of the grassroots with, with parents than many of our administrators can do. Having the parent meetings and if there is an issue with a student, then getting to know that student. Oftentimes, what we have found is that if there is an issue with a student and there's some bullying that's happening, that there is actually something going on in the home that's additional just between what you would see before, between two or three kids. This position can take the time to, to kind of take a deeper dive into that. If there are some issues that are happening in this particular situation or a matter that, that, that they are looking into, it may be providing those additional services, something that we wouldn't want our assistant principals to be doing, stepping in, providing services, recommendations to like our support with Maple Counseling Center. So it's, it's really somebody with a different expertise level to, to kind of step in, kind of that grassroots within our own community. We're just looking forward to seeing some results and outcome. I know that we've spoken a lot about this work over the last nine or 10 months. And so we're going to be able to see if this improves our outcomes by the end of the year.
I have one question if I can ask.
Sure.
This job is part-time. Is it also going to be sort of between the middle school and the high school? Or is there any one area that you're going to have her more situated at?
That's a really good question. Thank you for asking that question. That's a really good question, thank you for asking that question. We are going to be looking at this position to be between the high school and the middle school. So it's definitely a secondary position, so, and it is a half-time position. Within that half-time position, the position is doing some MFT work, but then also doing the parent outreach, and then working with the administration at BHHS and BVMS.
Thank you. Thank you.
And also, this came out of your advisory group that you formed last, at the end of last year, and after all your meetings with that group, this is a result of that as well?
Yeah, I mean, it started-
In terms of the recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, it started about nine months ago when we started to work with Ms. Samadi at the high school with Kim Decatral and Laura Collins-Williams. That's where that work started. It kind of aligned itself, it was interesting, because that, the work that, the recommendations that you received from us, from the panel, that advisory and accountability group, there was parts of those recommendations that said you need somebody to help with this outreach piece. So, yeah, so it was, we kind of knew that this was an area that we wanted to explore, that it was the panel recommendations that kind of, you know, came in to really confirm that that was a need that we have for the district.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. So I just wanted to say that, in looking into this a little deeper, and the source of funding for this, which is from the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The language on the grant does allow for the money to be spent on social, emotional well-being, but it puts importance on established learning recovery initiatives through the 2728 school year, and at a minimum support academic learning recovery. For me, it's a kind of matter of priorities. We haven't opened up our BVMS Wellness Center yet, we don't know the impact that that will have on the students. We do always admit that bullying is an issue, it always has been, it's nothing new, and we're trying to address it. And I think this year, we have put an incredible amount of resources in place, both at the high school and at the middle school, with the wellness centers, the administration, and counselors to be able to address this issue. We had a conversation at a study session last week regarding our academic performance. I happen to feel that the money from this grant, which is one-time money, correct, Dr. Bergy?
It is one-term money.
One-time money, would be better suited in helping to further help those students who have had learning loss issues. I think that it should be a priority for funds, is our learning loss, since we have an incredible support system for social, emotional wellness already in place. And I am concerned that not only does this position use those funds up, because they're one-time funds, that could be used to support students who are struggling, we also would have to then look for, if the board decides in a year, that we'd have to look for funding then, to keep a position like this on. I also understand that, per your explanation, that the position is working with parents and students, correct?
That's correct.
Does the position fall under the, well, is the position life-scanned through HR?
Yes.
And then does it fall under all the confidentiality rules that any other staff would have to fall under?
It does.
Okay. Okay. And then there was no other person interviewed for the position, right?
We selected Ms. Samadi from the work that we had been doing from nine months ago, so, yes.
Okay, understood. I know that most people who work with parents and students in our district, for instance, teachers and administrators do go through interview processes for their positions.
Yeah, this was a really unique process. When I look back, I think that, in many ways, that she did get a longer interview process than most, because she was working alongside us. So that gave her and us an indication of what this would be like working together.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
I'll call the question. Ms. Kraushauer, can you read the role, please?
Ms. Lifson? Aye. That's good. Mrs. Wells?
Yes. You called my name, ma, yes.
No, not yet. Going in order. Okay, Mrs. Marcus? That was a yes. Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Natchir?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
No. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on from consent to reports. Ms. Lifson?
Give it a second.
Improv.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. Okay. What report for the past two weeks? Starting off with athletics, last week, the first of our girls' volleyball games was also senior night, where our girls' varsity team defeated Inglewood, and that was a great celebration. And then next to that here, last week, we also have our girls' tennis team, who played Torrance this week in another round of successful matches. Okay. Some events we've had at the high school recently are the College Fair, where students got to preview and interact with reps from a great variety of colleges. And next to that is our Staff vs. Seniors volleyball game, put on by ASB, where the seniors made a shocking victory, following the results of last year, so, very exciting there. Oh, yeah, great new tradition. Now here, I have the Our Career Academy's first visit, which took place at the Lermontage Hotel last week, I believe. And from what I've heard, it was a great opportunity for them already to interact with hotel professionals and get the lay of the land, sort of, of the background of how a hotel operates. And we are very excited to do their next visit, which I believe is this week, so, yeah. Okay. Here then, I have a promo picture from our Food for the Future Club at the high school's Lemonade for Leukemia fundraiser, which took place just earlier this afternoon in front of the swim gym. And Food for the Future is one of the great clubs we have at the high school that does amazing fundraising for all sorts of medical organizations and cancer organizations. Now we have our homecoming festivities of all sorts, starting off with our Homecoming Spirit Week this week, then following up soon this Friday with our Homecoming Game vs. Morningside, our first home game in a few weeks now, I want to say three weeks. And then on Saturday, our Homecoming Dance. All the events have a country-western theme, so we are very excited to see, for the rally, dance, and all the events coming up. Yeah. And then going over to the middle school really quickly, last week, the middle school had its first week of multicultural days, where they celebrated the African and oceanic countries, which involved students getting to wear and make flags of their countries of origin, and obviously indulge in amazing cultural foods, which was, oh my God, made multicultural day one of the best events in elementary school, as always. And this is going to be, this year it's unique, because they're going to be continuing it for multiple weeks, I believe. So we have many more of these fun activities and foods coming up. And that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lifson. Dr. Bergy?
Thank you, President Margot. So I'd like to just start off this evening, we've talked about in the past the very robust agreement that we have with the city. We have just attended, just last week, a meeting with the city to have their final vote on the JPA. I just want to mention really quick that this is a really, a benefit for the entire community. This is a three-year agreement, we just finished those negotiations, and they went really well. We approached them a lot differently this year, we had more people involved. And I really want to thank people in this picture, as you can see, our city council, also Mr. Ellis, who's here, Mr. Guzman, also, Mr. Haas was part of our negotiations, Mr. Bugby was part of our negotiations, and Mr. Mead was part of our negotiations. We spent hundreds of hours on this agreement, and we spent a lot of time with our city counterparts, and it's really good. It's a solid agreement, and our after-school programming is increased due to a lot of the work with Mr. Seaman, thank you for that. And we're just really proud of the work that we've done, and we have a bright future in the next three years as we continue, as our construction continues to roll online and that we have occupancy. It's better for our school district, but the facilities are also better for our city as well. We had a great evening last week. Every year, the mayor has an opportunity to do kind of a state-of-the-city address, and our board, and myself and Ms. Starkins were there, and just a great opportunity to see each other, to also look then to see what's happening in our city and kind of an outlook for the following year. I just want to mention, you know, you've heard Mr. Margot say this a lot, and then also even tonight, talking about academic conversations. I've also had said in the past, when we put together our strategic plan, that it was unusual to have that type of collaboration between your cabinet and your school board. It doesn't happen in most districts. And we've done that successfully, and I'm really proud of that as a superintendent. We've come a long way, and it's a really robust plan, it's an accountable plan. But kind of moving kind of off of the strategic plan, one of the areas is to look at student achievement, but to look to see also how our students and our schools are ranked. And as you know, there's several different studies out there, whether they're niche studies, you know, there's all kinds of different ways that schools are ranked. The U.S. News and World Report is a really high-profile ranking. And so I appreciated the presentation from Mr. Seaman, which was outstanding. If you haven't seen that, I do recommend highly that you go back and you, we've recorded that meeting, it was live, but it's in the Kbev recordings of our meetings, it's super easy to find because they're amazing, and they put things really easy to find. But I really want more people to see that, because it is an interesting way to see how schools are ranked, but it's also a way for us to have a balanced conversation about, not just the ranking, because that's important, but it's the work behind the ranking, and how do you get there, and about self-improvement. And for me, not to belabor this slide to death, but I just can't emphasize enough that we had a really good academic conversation, and we learned a lot from each other, we learned a lot from Mr. Seaman's presentation. But I think what it does, it kind of equalizes this playing field, because people easily can make assumptions, and I think it's dangerous to do that without really knowing what you're, you know, basing something on. And I think it was a really, a really fair way for us to sit and have a conversation. Instead, you see the formal side here of what's happening, but that was a true conversation, and some really great questions that generated some really good thought about what we're doing now and how we can make some improvements in the future. And I liked at the end, I think that we were able to look at some real short-term goals from where we are now, to make those early wins, those, some improvement right away, and then some longer-term items as well. So I just really want to thank the board for that opportunity, because I think that it was just filled with a lot of information that people didn't know. And again, just an opportunity for us to really all share our voice at the table when it comes to how our students are doing. Just really quickly, just, you know, every year we have National Walk to School Day, it's a great partnership with our elementary schools, and also our parents, and our city partners who join us and meet our families. Something new that we've been working on with the city, and Ms. Starkins, is providing safe routes to school. And so this has been a long-term project to the city, and Ms. Starkins spent a lot of time meeting with city personnel to collaborate and also share information, and then transfer that information so that we can share some of our resources, like crossing guards, and, you know, where streets are for the best path of travel, if you will, for our students. And so this information is being sent out to our parents, and if a parent is ever not sure about what that best way is, these maps will be really helpful. A quick plug for BHF, who this evening just did their innovation grants, but this has become a yearly event and fundraiser. I've asked our entire leadership team to go, not only because it's fun, but it's just, it's a way to really get to know a lot of our community. This is an event that so many people come out, I mean, it is packed, so get your tickets, but we're all looking forward to that. Also coming up on this Sunday is the Not Today Cancer 5K. It's a run-walk, there's an opportunity for even our youngest of children to run in a supervised area, so it's really a family event. This is dedicated to Mason Duncan Booth, and we're just so proud as a school district to be able to host this year at Beverly Vista Middle School, where Mason would be an eighth grade student, and his sister Madeline is a sixth grade student currently at BVMS. So we absolutely love to work with JJ and Stacy, and this is going to be a great event. We're hoping for over 700 tickets, we had 400 last year, we're already up to 550, so it's not too late, please go on here. It's a great event, it's over quickly, but you will really benefit from spending a couple hours together as a community for Not Today Cancer. Math night is coming up, another, just an academic conversation is to have conversations with parents. What we've heard a lot through our strategic planning is that more and more parents want to understand what it is that teachers are teaching so that they can reinforce items at home and topics at home. So this is just another opportunity, starting at 5:00 with TK through 2, and then we have grades 3 through 5 at 6:00 to 7:00. And this is just a great opportunity to bring two schools together and talk about math, and talk about instructional strategies, and talk about how parents can help students and reinforce the academic expectations at home. I just want to talk for a moment, I was really glad that Mr. Margot did a moment of silence for our construction worker here at the high school, working on B3 and B4. And, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with the family. This is somebody that has worked on projects in El Rodeo and also at the high school, and this person is somebody who was highly regarded in his field and in his craft, and was specifically tasked to come back and work on projects for us. And I can't even imagine how difficult and devastating this is for the family. But, you know, even if it's somebody that's working on a construction site, which many people didn't know him, because this is a site that's not accessible to students or staff, it certainly means a lot to the rest of us that have been working on this project for so many years, and this type of news is really shocking and devastating. So I appreciate that moment of silence, this is a family that has asked for some privacy at this time, and we're happy to oblige, but I couldn't continue without really recognizing somebody that has helped move along our construction program, but somebody that, again, is the best of the best. construction program, but somebody that, again, is the best of the best in their field and was able to put their work into our high school. And finally, I just want to end with, you know, just like the rest of you in the community, you know, I've had a lot of sleepless nights. You know, it may be over 7,000 miles from Beverly Hills to Tel Aviv or Jerusalem, but it feels like it's right next door because of our community, because of the relationships. And it's been shocking and, and just so surprising and unpredictable and I've seen just about every emotion. Just putting, being a superintendent off to the side, just a human, just trying to understand what's happening. And so, you know, when I put out communications, I work really hard on our communications. It comes right from my heart. I collaborate, collaborate a lot with Ms. Starkins and, and we often reach out to, to some people that are, are people that know more than we do. And so we collaborate a lot. And so, you know, we put out information and we believe it's the right information. And we're happy with that information as a, as a school organization that is responsible for students. You know, we don't always get it right. We don't always put the emphasis where the reader might. And I just want to say, it's, it's, it's interesting because if you think about life in general and you're listening to me speak, you've listened to some other people talk to you tonight, there's the sense of grace that you get sometimes when you are, you're sharing a story or that you're talking. You know, you have this opportunity where you can talk to somebody and, and there's a little bit of grace given to have that conversation. But when it comes to writing and when you have to write something, every word matters. And I realize that and I understand that. I just want our community, our students to know that we do try to get this right. And I just want to share with our community and our board, our staff and our students that, you know, this has been the highest priority for me as a superintendent, but also for a human to, to, to understand. I attended the rally yesterday, the Lily Pond, and not as a superintendent, and where anything that I went because I'm trying to get my head around what's happening. Because my biggest responsibility, those schools right there on the screen, all of them, that's my responsibility. And so it's the safety emotionally, physically, that is my top priority. So I may not have gotten it right on a first message that went out, but boy, I put everything I could into that message because that's the reason why we're here as we try to understand what's going on, is the physical and emotional safety of what you see on that screen. So I want to thank the community. This is a community I live in and work here and I'm blessed every single day, but I am going to tell you, I don't get it right all the time. But I would challenge anybody to find another superintendent that put out any type of statement because most didn't put out anything. And so I challenge anybody to come up with something that's better. It was a little developmental. You know, I, this is, this is where I was on Sunday. And then the most important thing for me was checking in with our students to find out where they're at. Before, I could write anything other, other than what I sent out. And, you know, I was reassured on Monday, but yet I was also taken aback because our students need us right now. I have a, a couple of appointments with students this week and I'm so glad that they're reaching out to me because, as you know, I love student-led projects, activities. You know, I'm, I'm excited to be able to collaborate with them because our, I want our students' voice to be heard. It shouldn't be just mine. So I'm excited about that this week. But I just want to say thank you for the grace. I think as many people that were happy with the communications, some were not. And, and I get that and I understand that and I just really appreciate that I live in a community that's willing to give me the feedback to do better. So I kind of ended on that note because I just want to acknowledge that this is an incredibly difficult time for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Any comments on Dr. Bregge's report?
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. And as a psychologist and an educational professional who's had the pleasure of getting to know you personally, I, I know, I feel, I really feel the deep-seated human empathy that you have for what you do. And while I find you to be very linear in a lot of ways, logistical in the way you think, and I can see you as a math teacher that you once were, I can also see you as all the things you did in your storied career, not, not the flight attendant so much, but I hope I can. But I, I just, I see a lot of, you know, great qualities, but I also absolutely see your humanity. And sometimes I say to myself, gosh, you know, if I didn't have my own children, I wonder if I would, you know, have the same like understanding of kids and the same deep love. But in some ways, I think there are people who haven't, you know, don't have kids, but actually have more of a capacity because they just see the larger picture and with fresh eyes in a way. And so what come, what resounds with me is your passion and your, your heartfelt sentiments for our kids and that I really, I really do feel that. And I know, I always say you have a very difficult job and I had no idea just how difficult your job was until I got on this board. I really didn't. I didn't.
Thank you.
On another note, I also wanted to talk about the, the study session that we had concerning education, educational achievement, the U.S. News and World Report. And I also agree that it was a very organic conversation and I felt that it was great because it, it felt less formal. It was less formal, but it, you know, there was a give and take and an exchange of information. Dustin did an amazing, Mr. Seaman did an amazing job with, with his presentation. And also I think it was important to talk about the fact that it's very difficult to find a measurement or a metric or a tool of any sort, assessment of any sort, that really is, is completely valid and robust. And while U.S. News and World Report does a good job and looks at, you know, 12 to 20 different criteria, it is, there, it is flawed. And I think that's one thing that, that I wanted to point out. And I did point out that, you know, there's a number of universities that are pulling out from, from relying upon it because it is flawed. However, it really did help us to start the conversation and expose some of the areas where we absolutely do need and are looking at, honestly, to make improvement with our achievement and ourselves as a school district. So thank you.
She had stepped away. I'll go across here first. Did you have any comments on Dr. Bregge's report?
I just wanted to thank him for that very comprehensive report. I know that we've got, we got a lot of things behind us now that we had to do. And I just think that in terms of the study session, I felt that, and, and this is hit upon, it depends, you know, we talk about two things in statistics, reliability and validity. And sometimes apples and oranges don't mix. And in one, they're looking at one metric and in another, they're looking at another metric. So it depends on what you look at and what they're actually measuring and how they measure it, in fact, can affect, affect not only the validity, but the reliability of the answer that they come up with. So I, I sometimes think, even though we tend to look at those numbers very quickly, I think we need to know that there's other stuff behind it that has created it. And I'd just like to say that I appreciated the study session and I, I thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bregge.
Mrs. Wells?
Well, I'd like to thank you as well for your report and acknowledge Dustin for his report that he gave at the study session and encourage everyone in the community to please go to the study session and watch it because it is more complex of an answer. And I think it was very informative for all of us as a district, as a board, as parents and as students. So I really encourage everybody to please take the time to watch that study session. It was really informative. And as well, thank you to all of our staff and all of your support with our JPA negotiations. We've only received good feedback about that process and how well it went. And it's really a lot of the groundwork that you put forth for us to work with and I really appreciate that. And we've only heard positive feedback from that and it's been approved. So congratulations to all of us and to the community at large. And, and then at the end of the meeting, I'll talk about the other meetings that I attended. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge, for your report. I always love hearing from you. In regard to the study session, I just would like to circle back because to me, at the end, we almost were coming to some conclusions. And so I welcome the opportunity for Dustin to go back with his team and with you and then to come back to the board to see how we can help. The study session, my intention personally was to understand what's going on as a parent and as a board member, but then as a board member, well, what are we going to do about it? And I felt like at the end, we did have a number of parent comments and we were drawing conclusions together. So I just would ask if my colleagues agree, then we can invite further discussion whether, and I'm just throwing this out there, this is not a decree, but for example, we talked about taking the AP exam as possibly being the final in a class to make sure that all students do that. No, I think that's something that you raised at the end. And so as, as you were saying, early gains, I'd like to make those early gains sooner than later, if possible, please. So, you know, if the board can support this district in advancing further sooner than later, I'm in, please. Insofar as our communications and what's been going on, you know, in the world the last couple of days, I think we're all traumatized. I know I am. I definitely have my own, you know, immediate family stuck in Israel and other family who are doing other things in Israel and it's been absolutely heartbreaking. I will thank you for allowing me to always give you my honest feedback. And, you know, I, I feel that we're at a point where you know that it's feedback and it's not criticism. And I, I hope that the diversity of the board is, you know, something that the community really sees that we, you know, are five different people plus you, plus Sophia, but we are bringing our perspectives together. We are sharing and I see that you're really processing it all. So, you know, thank you for being open-minded about all of it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Moving on to planning of facilities, can I get a motion for 12A, please?
I make a motion to ratify the agreement with Garza Construction to demolish interior walls of temporary housing at the Beverly Hills High School.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells. Any questions?
Yes, I would like, there's two that are sort of tied up together here. And this one talks about the, the walls and the other says to disconnect, to remove from the same walls. Where's the, I'd like to know where this, where the Garza Construction, where is that? And is it going to be used again if you destroy the walls? I, I don't know what, that's what I was wanting.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Marcus, and good evening to our board president, Mr. Margot, our board and our public here, and Dr. Bregge. Yes, so regarding this, 12A, so there's two items, right, 12A and 12B. 12A pertains to the demo and removal of the interior walls and all of the other items. What we're talking about in 12A is basically those modular buildings that we had, where we had some special education classrooms. We also had our construction team there and part of our MNO staff was there as well, as well as part of our facility staff. So it was about six classrooms, modular, six classroom modular buildings and two restrooms. So in order for us to be able to continue our process for the upper field project for construction, we had to make a move in the sense of moving people out of those buildings. We were able to move those individuals to the bridge and to other places in the high school and therefore clearing the space that we need in order to continue construction in the upper fields.
Are you saying then that these buildings are going back to the company that we get them from or is that?
Yes, they're going back to William Scotsman. They were on a lease and actually we're saving money by getting rid of these buildings now. And we don't have to renew a new lease. The new rates that they were proposing were higher as well, although they were the same building. That's kind of how that works with modulators, unfortunately. So we were looking at that increase and we're like, well, you know what, let's just do it now. So it was a joint effort between our construction and our MNO team as well in regards to fixing up the areas in the bridge where they were moving and therefore saving money for construction in the long run by not having to encumber the lease payments.
Thank you. That's a great, great saving. I wonder how much, but you're always looking for our, trying to save a few pennies here and there. And I know this isn't a few pennies, so thank you, Rafael.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Rafael, what do you estimate the cost would have been to renew the lease?
I, you know, I don't have the figures in front of me, but I think it was like about, like about a thousand dollars a month, somewhere around there per building.
In how many buildings?
It was six modulators. And so it would have cost us to continue to have those. But more importantly, there's the effect of time. If we don't clear, if we hadn't cleared those areas, then we would have to enter a new agreement. And then on top of that, it would put us behind on the upper field project, which is that softball field that we were looking at, as well as those tennis courts, the new tennis courts. So all of that now, we're trying to hurry to get, be able to go out, do the RFP and be able to get that into construction. So by clearing that out, it allows then people to be able to see the site and see, can I do this and submit bids? And so we're moving quickly there. So it not only saves us, you know, money, but it also saves us time.
So 72,000 a year?
Yep.
As time and money, so congratulations. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, colleagues? Ms. Krausauer, can you call the role, please?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Item 12B.
I'll make a motion for the ratification of agreement with Securitech to disconnect and remove fire alarm devices from the temporary housing at the Beverly Hills High School.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions?
Rafael, can you speak about the bidding process on this?
Sure. So for item 12A, we went out and we received three bids on the project and the lowest bid came back to be the Garza Construction Company. So they were in charge of ripping out the walls that we had, you know, because we got the modulators. In order to build the office spaces that we needed, we had to install walls. So they came in and took those out because to return the modular, you have to have it in its original condition. And so that's what we did. And so that's what Garza did in 12A. 12B was more pertaining to the fire alarm system, rerouting the wiring and reprogramming of the fire alarm system. So for that, we didn't really go out for bids because we already have a contractor that we work with. And they are our preferred contractor for fire alarm services at our district. They have the historical knowledge of how the fire alarm system worked and those are very intricate kind of systems. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't disturb anything in that process. And we're constantly evaluating their, the market rate and what they're charging us and they're typically below the market rate. So that's, we enjoy working with them. We've recently gone and done our own bidding for fire alarm services. And so when we looked at this, we're like, you know, we need to do this. And, and we had to also do it pretty quickly because again, the, the agreement was expiring. So we were like, okay, let's get this done and, and move forward.
Thank you.
So I, hopefully you can answer this. So my understanding about the fire alarm systems is because the systems and the modulators are tied into the existing school systems, it's not something that you can just demo. They have to, they have to be, oh, because otherwise you cut off the rest of the system.
Yes, they have to dis, essentially disconnect the areas. It's a little, it's more technical than, yeah.
Just cutting a wire and pulling a wall.
Yeah. And that's, so you have to have someone that specializes in this to do it correctly.
Okay, yeah, because I was wondering why Garza didn't take care of that, but as I read further, I just want to confirm that was the specific scope of work.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Kraus-Hauer, please call the roll.
Ms. Lifson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Madden-Carry?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other, the other Mrs. Wells. Moving on to our board policy, approval of the second reading for the 7,000 series.
I'll make a motion for the approval of second reading of the board policy 7,000.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Stern. Any questions? Okay. Ms. Kraus-Hauer, please call the roll.
Ms. Lifson?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Madden-Carry?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries, and we have updated 7,000s. What's the next thousands that's coming our way, Dr. Breggy?
I think it's, is it 3,000s?
That's how I thought.
So, yeah, we've, we're working on some for your review, so that you have a little bit of time to look at them before.
Fabulous.
We vote.
Looking forward to getting all those approved. Okay. Colleagues, meeting reports, Mrs. Marcus, I'll, and comments, I'll start with you.
No, I have not been able to leave the house, so I haven't been to any meetings. And I just want to, I would love to tell a brief story that was involved, the, what's happening in Israel involved us this weekend. My daughter-in-law was in Israel visiting her sick cousin. And we, when we heard the news on Saturday, and the tragic things that were happening, the first thing that was in my mind is I've got to get her to come home. So, in discussion with her parents, we were able to get her on a flight on Sunday morning, and I want to announce that gratefully, she was home Sunday night, back in Los Angeles. So, it was a scary weekend for us, and she spent some time in the bunkers and the safehouses. And so, I just want to share that, and I feel, I would just share, my heartfelt goes out to all of the people of Israel, and those that are hostages, and those that have passed away. And it's just horrendous, and I think that, I hope it will end soon, but it doesn't look very hopeful. Thank you.
Ms. Lifson, anything?
Yeah, so, I, just in light of the immense grief and confusion sort of that we've seen in the community in the past couple of days, I just wanted to say that while it's homecoming week for, for the high school, so many students, obviously throughout the district, have much heavier things on their minds right now. So, at this time, to our students, I just wanted to urge everyone to really utilize the mental health and wellness resources we have available, and continue having the conversations that are helping people process their feelings and educate our peers and community. And to that end, I wanted to thank the staff and student organizations who have made space for these conversations, and have been proactive in brainstorming ways that our community can support and donate to the victims in Israel. And just in general, to remind everyone struggling right now to take care of themselves and put their mental health first.
Mrs. Wells, thank you. Sophia?
When we last, since we last met, in terms of meetings, I would say Wednesday, September 27th, I attended the Beverly Hills Police Department and Benevolent Fund Gala, as well, Noah was there. And it really was a celebration honoring our Beverly Hills Police Department, including, they, they handed out awards and honorees, and including our PTA President, Rose Kaiserman, who was honored, and I'm very proud of her, for her community involvement and connection with our police department. As well, our SRO, Erica Maitland, was honored at that. And Sergeant Jeff Newman, who I think everybody knows, and who is in charge of community outreach for the Beverly Hills Police Department. So, I just want to congratulate all of the award recipients, and how lucky we are to have such a great connection with our police department through our SROs and Jeff Newman, and in so many other ways as well. So, that was really wonderful. Thursday, September 28th, I attended our finance committee meeting, which went really well, and Rafael gave an update on our 2324 budget revise and our improved financial position. So, that was really wonderful and, and very well-received. And the same evening, we attended the evening with the mayor, and again, it was wonderful to be there. And the mayor did recognize our district and the importance of our schools and our community, and called out the success of our negotiations with the JPA. So, that's really all the meetings that I've attended since that time. And I do want to speak about Israel and, and the events that have been happening. Yesterday, we attended the rally, which was really, it was really a beautiful experience. I would say that, you know, everyone there was there with a heavy heart, and, but it was really beautiful to see our community together, and really beautiful for me to see the youth, and all of our students, and, and the youth in our community to be there in support of Israel, and really to see the impact of community and what that, what that does, in terms of really supporting everybody. So, it was, it was a heavy-hearted event, but it was very warming to see everybody together and to see that support. And I would like to also remind all of our parents, as well as our community, we are all seeing so many images on social media, and just media in general. And I would remind our parents to really be mindful of what our children are seeing, and to try and really minimize how much exposure they're having to social, to the social media and media right now, because there is an impact on them in terms of what they're seeing. And we do have, as I, as, as Sophia mentioned, we have all of our mental health and wellness services. And I would suggest that perhaps as a district, we look at programming for our parents as well, just to provide guidance on how to talk to the kids and really process some of the conversations and images that they're seeing in terms of their well-being. And lastly, I would just say that it's been really, you know, devastating and heartbreaking to watch what's been going on in Israel. And I just want to express my support for Israel during this time, and really condemn the terrorist attack on Israel and its innocent civilians and what we've been seeing. I unequivocally support Israel and its right to exist peacefully. And I just want to also express my prayers for all the many innocent people who have been harmed during this time, and pray for peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't have a meeting to report on, but I would like to thank this community for so much positive warmth the last couple of weeks. Not this weekend, but the prior weekend, I had an incident at Century City. And it's not the type of incident that you're thinking of. It was an amazing incident, actually. I bumped into my daughter's classmate with mom and older sister at the treehouse, and then another BHUSD family. We bumped into them there, and that mom needed to let me know how happy she was with her principal. It was just essential for her to get that point across, because her son had some special needs. So, we were hanging out, and we decided all to go upstairs and have dinner together. And on the way, we bumped into another family who was there with many kids. And there were so many kids, because the mom and dad shared with me that it was their own kids, and they also were helping another BHUSD family where the mom had had a third child. So, she had brought the other two kids out to give the mom some downtime. So, we're basically like 30 BHUSD family, parent, community members, riding up the escalator all together, and sitting up there and having dinner together spontaneously. And it was beautiful. I could not have planned it any better, actually. And so, it had just stayed with me. And then, of course, as this weekend unfolded, I mean, I'm so stunned and traumatized, as I know we all are. And I just want to acknowledge everybody who has done their best to support one another, whether it's your notes that you've done your best on, whether it's the PTA presidents who sent out a note of support district-wide, whether it's Mr. Stewart, you know, having a moment of silence for our oldest kids at the high school, and Dr. Scon going in to the various classes to check in with the students, and all the way down. I think it's so important, and I'm so grateful for this community. And so, I, as Rochelle said, I, I pray for the peaceful return of every child to their parent. And that's all I'm going to say about that. That's what, that's what's in my prayers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. It's, it's been very, very hard for me as well. It's, it's all very sad, and I really can't see how anything will be, any, I don't see any light at the end of the tunnel. Even, even if it's just long and a protracted conflict, I don't really see the light on the other side, unfortunately. And I'm usually an optimistic person. Makes me very sad on many, many fronts. It even makes me sad that any group of humans would be compelled to commit such atrocities, and what would, what would condition anyone to act in such a way? Really, there are no words. I did, on another note, and quite paradoxically, I wanted to mention that the Human Relations Commission, of which I attend the meetings every third Thursday, I haven't returned to a new meeting, however, I wanted to reiterate that they have an important theme that's going on in October, and that is Civility Month, which they describe as an opportunity for us to take a stand in support of responsible actions, as well as honor a role model of civility within our city. So, please join us in recognizing and congratulating a very deserving member of our community when we present the Civility Award at the City Council Meeting on October 17th. And that was a statement from Chair Noel Freeman. So, despite all the evils and horrific violence and unthinkable, unconscionable activities that are going in our world, going on in our world, I, I like to count myself as part of a city that at least is trying to make an effort, however small, to, to echo that we care about civility, and we embrace that and value that, and will honor individuals who we see represent that. So, thank you to the Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. First, I'd like to start out by thanking our BHEA President, Elena Castanon, for joining us as usual. Thank you for your consistency. Thank Kbev. Thank you guys for, for all your work tonight and for the study session. The board appreciates that. Now, people can just watch that study session over and over again until the actors are not on strike and there's more television on. So, a lot has been said about the situation in the world. I think, I was pondering it over, because as I mentioned, I was a school teacher, teaching fourth grade in 2001. It definitely, events like this affect us differently, right, from our perspectives? Elementary school, I think Dr. Breggy had said that somewhere, they're feeling different things, whether they're in elementary school, middle school, or high school. The important thing everybody should realize is that we have to talk about this. We have to, people have to have conversations, have conversations at home with your kids, engage, talk to your friends. But you have to, you have to unravel what has gone on, because it's the level of an atrocity that we don't see often. Fortunately, we don't see it often, or unfortunately, maybe we've seen it too much. And I think that by communicating, you know, one of the first ways to thwart off an unhealthy mind is, is by speaking about what ails us up here. And I think that for, for kids and adults who may not have experienced, a lot of adults were very young when September 11th happened, and now they're looking at it from a different perspective in their own lives, having children. I, I know terror and hate is, is a horrible thing, and yet there's always this perspective, right? Flying a plane into a building is different than invading a music festival and, and doing the atrocities that occurred there. But it's still terror, and it terrifies us, right? That's part of the word. And I think we continue as a community to, to kind of hold fast to, to our better ideals and how we support each other. In light of discussing the bullying, anti-bullying program, this is, of course, a learning opportunity, because bullying, you know, leads to hate. It exists in that world, right? It exists in a world where we don't want people to be doing that to somebody else, just like we don't want going on in Israel. So, we should remember that as we behave ourselves, as we conduct ourselves. Who are we going to be like, right? We should, we should choose to be on the good side of that coin. So, with that, I, I tell everybody to cry and question things, and talk to people, and be angry, and feel. It's very important to feel and not hold that back, and feel in a safe environment. And as my colleagues mentioned, we have safe environments in our schools for our children to express their feelings, and we hope that they have a safe environment at home to express their feelings as well. So, to that, I wish everyone the best in navigating this time. We all need it, and we all need to support each other. So, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Ms. Kraus-Hauer, anything to say?